So the tax rate is not yet set. That is our upper range. Okay, so with that, there were two different statements that were issued with the proposed tax notice in the legislation to go through this with our public. So the first one, it's very hard to see in the back, I'm so sorry. If you want to move forward, feel free. The first one is what was published in the paper and we publish in the Deboeran Register. You'll see three different columns. The first column is our current tax year. So these are the tax dollars that we are bringing in at North Polk for our current school year, which is thirteen million sixty-seven thousand dollars, and we have a levy rate of eighteen dollars and seventy-seven cents per thousand. Then I'm going to jump across to the right column, and that right column is what they are proposed. If we were to set our tax levy at that upper rate of eighteen point nine-nine dollars per one thousand dollars of taxable valuation, the district would bring in fourteen million one hundred and twenty-five thousand. Oh, there we go. That middle column is really confusing. So they call this the effective tax rate. Ask questions if you have them because it is messy at best. So this is assuming that if the school district brought in identical dollars from the current year, they made the assumption that assessment values will go up by ten percent. That is in this middle column, this effective rate. They're also making the assumption that our, our change in, oh, I'm drawing a blank, I'm so sorry. Our rollback is, has been changed to the next rollback step by the state. And I will go through what that rollback means. I will go through the assessed value, we'll talk through each of these.
Is there any difference from that column to your far right column as far as, they're making the same assumptions on both columns?
They are making the same assumptions. This one's assuming that we are going to take in the exact same tax dollars as our current year. Thus, it's showing a tax rate of seventeen point six-four dollars. Where this one, if we raise our tax levy to eighteen point nine-nine, it says we're bringing in fourteen million dollars. But again, that's assuming that our assessed values are all going up by ten percent. That's also not assuming, but it is in place, the rollback, the new rollback set by the Department of Revenue. So if you look at the line across the bottom then, it shows that our grand total increases from thirteen million to fourteen million. But if all of our revenues stayed the same with those assessed increases in assessed values and that change in the rollback, we would only bring in thirteen million dollars. However, if you remember back in November, November of twenty-three, we had a bond election. And we took it out to vote and we built on some facilities here at North Polk. This middle column does not take into consideration any debt that is coming on from new bond votes. So you'll see that our bond debt service went from three, two-point-three million to three-point-oh million. That is a hard number. That is our debt that we currently have on bond issues, our GO bonds. Then you look down here, and again, it's our current tax rate, eighteen point seven-seven percent and the eighteen point nine-nine percent. Again, very confusing, not sure why that's even included because nothing stays the same in that. Nothing is apples to apples in that column.
Did you go into the debt thing again because that bond referendum was seventeen million as I recall?
Yep, seventeen million. So when we run our budget, we know exactly how much those payments are going to be for that fiscal year, and we go dollar for dollar for the payments that we need to pay. We have more than one bond referendum on the books. So that is exactly the dollars we will be paying out in our bonds, GO bonds. So here's the second notice that went out, and this is the one that each of you might have received. This is my own personal one. Mine is out of Boone County. I'm that little bitty section in Shelbyville that is Boone County. They all look the same. It's just different information based on what county you're in and the city that you might be in. So this first section up here, that is North Polk's information, and we'll come back to that in just a moment. The second one, this is your counting information. I'm not going to cover anything in there. I don't have the details on that one. The third one is your city information. Again, I do not have that detail. Then up at the top, it gives the breakdown of how much of your tax dollars are going towards the school versus the county versus the city in our current year. And you'll see that North Polk is pulling in fifty-six point seven-three percent of the tax dollars being paid into our school district. Then I'm going to jump to the bottom. And they put some disclaimers in here. And the very first one says, "Final tax rates will change due to final adopted amounts, legislative changes, and the other levy authorities not included in this mailing." As you know, the state has not settled on what they are going to fund our schools with as of yet. So we know the amount coming from the state is going to change. We know that there are changes coming, which is going to make all of the information in this particular notice invalid. Not necessarily invalid, but inaccurate. It's no longer going to be accurate once they settle. The other disclaimers that are here are for municipalities, cities, rural taxing, and a county. So I'm going to bring you, whoops. The last one that's here is the examples. So if you look at the top one, it's assuming a hundred thousand dollar house is now going to be valued at a hundred and ten thousand next year. That is a ten percent increase in assessed value. The other one is three hundred thousand versus three hundred and thirty thousand. Again, a ten percent increase in assessed value. Keep that in mind as we go forward. I'm going to bring you back to the schools' information. So what does it mean when it tells us our current property tax? I can tell you, even though I work with it, when I open this thing up, I'm like, "How much am I paying?" I look at that number, there's no decimals, there's no commas, and I'm thinking, "What the heck? What is that?" This is, if you recall back on the first page, this is the total dollars right now that North Polk is receiving in the current year as property tax dollars. The second one is the current tax rate. Again, ours is currently eighteen point seven-seven or dollars per thousand. The effective tax rate, that really means nothing to us. The proposed tax dollars, if we were to go to the eighteen point nine-nine dollars per thousand, based on the assumptions and based on the data that they have plugged in there at the state level, we would have fourteen million one hundred twenty-five thousand. And again, our proposed tax rate of eighteen point nine-nine. Again, that is not set in stone. We are still working through the budget process. We do not know what we're getting from the state. That sets our upper tax levy.
Do you know what you calculated from the state when you figured this, about ten percent, two and a half percent?
We're running on two percent right now because we have to do worst-case scenario.
So you're running on all of that?
So let's talk about assessed values because I was telling you in all of these reports that they're assuming assessed values are going up by ten percent. Well, there's this little Iowa code, chapter four forty-one, that says properties are only assessed in every odd-numbered year. Well, we're talking about taxes for two thousand twenty-six. That's not an odd year, friends. They are, unless you have had a lot of work done to your property, your tax value should not change. Your assessed value should not change. Miss spoke there. It is not tax value, it's your assessed value. So again, we're not in an odd-numbered year. Assessed value should not change. So everywhere that it's assumed that the property taxes were going up by ten percent, that is inaccurate. The state is well aware of that, did not have the time to respond to correct that. And again, down here on the one that was published in the paper, shows the same thing. Assuming tax assessments are increasing by ten percent. So let's talk about the rollback percentage. What is that thing? So you've got your assessed value, but you're not taxed on your full assessed value. There's something called a rollback percentage, and that rollback percentage is the percentage of your assessed value that then becomes your taxable valuation. The rollback percentage increased, again, it's set by the Iowa Department of Revenue, went from forty-six point three-four percent to forty-seven point four-three percent. That affects your taxes due in September twenty-five and March of twenty-six. So how are your real estate taxes calculated then? You've got your assessed value. You multiply that times your rollback value. That gives you what's called a taxable valuation. From there, you divide it by one thousand, you take it times the tax rate. That becomes your gross property taxes to be paid. From there, you might have some tax credits. Those might be military tax credits, it might be a homestead tax credit. You might have, there's a few other random ones that are quite as popular that you might also have. So I want to look at what is the impact of the rollback in itself? What impact is that having on our taxes as we are going to pay them? So to do that, I want to keep a couple of things constant. I'm going to say in fiscal twenty-five, we've already learned that it's not an assessment year. A one-hundred-thousand-dollar house stays a one-hundred-thousand-dollar house. I'm also going to take North Polk's levy rate, and I'm going to keep it constant because I only want to know what it, what that effect of the rollback is having on my taxes. So the first thing you want to look at is the rollback again, went from forty-six point three-four to forty-seven point four-three percent. That's an increase of one point zero-eight percent, which equates to a taxable value increase of one thousand eighty-nine dollars and a twenty-dollar increase in your taxes. Now, let's pull in what North Polk is proposing for their tax rate. So in this one, I still have the one-hundred thousand as stay the constant. I show the rollback increase. Now I'm putting in the grand total levy rate and increasing it to eighteen point nine-nine. It adds approximately twenty-three cents per thousand. So with the rollback of twenty dollars and with the increase to North Polk, the increase on that one-hundred-thousand-dollar house is thirty-one dollars. That means eleven dollars of that increase is the change in North Polk's budget if we were to set our rate at eighteen point nine-nine. So why does North Polk try to keep our tax rate very similar from year to year? Our property insurance, we, it's been crazy. I can tell you in fiscal twenty-four, we had a thirty percent increase. And things are happening like putting a seventy-five thousand per building deductible on every building for wind instances. Whether they're on this site or Polk City or wherever that property might be, it was seventy-five thousand per building. So we saw a thirty percent increase in twenty-four, a twenty-four percent increase in twenty-five, and now we're looking at an additional ten percent increase in twenty-six. If you think about that, and you referenced what we were setting our budget on with funding for the state, then what was that number again? Two percent in the Senate. Two percent, and we're looking at ten percent just on property insurance. We're also, our increase in our health insurance is eleven point three percent for our existing employees. We would love to offer health insurance to more of our staff. And then if you look at how much our student levels are increasing. On our count in, on October first of twenty-one, we increased by forty-nine students. Twenty-two, one hundred and forty-seven students. Twenty-three, fifty-four, or fifty-two students. And this year, we increased by forty-six students. That count is taking place on October first, and we are serving those kids for the entire school year and do not receive funding for that increase in students until next year. We also, of course, see the increase in our existing supplies and services. And again, I cannot iterate enough. If the state gives us a two percent increase, it's getting eaten up. So we are trying really, really hard to work smarter, not harder. We're trying to beat good fiscal people with our money. We are trying really hard to keep that tax rate the same because we know it affects you. But these are the things we're up against.
Do you know how much school choice takes from our school district?
I think the number was thirty, around thirty students.
What does that equate to, thirty times seventeen hundred?
No, it'd be closer to eight thousand dollars.
So that's what we're up against right there. So again, if we're not setting a tax rate tonight, we are just talking about this is the highest that our tax rate could be set at. We are working really hard to, to stay within our means, to work smarter, not harder, to be great fiscal stewards. And I can tell you, our board is very much engaged in it. Our administrators are very much engaged in it. Michael, amazing ideas coming out of his head. Like, we are trying to be creative and trying to really stay within our means without increasing a bunch for each of you.
So the last bond that we had was on March fourth. In the notice that I said there would be no increase to current taxes. Is that not valid?
Tax rate?
Tax rate.
Well, technically, you said, what she said is accurate.
No increase to current taxes.
Because I pointed out the tax rate to you, and it shouldn't have been greater than what she said was.
Real quick here, we're just gonna, if anybody wants to talk publicly, we'll give you guys five minutes, comments for or against it. And instead of just going back and forth, let's have everybody come up here, give your name, give your address.
Very good.
And everybody's entitled to five minutes. And if you have any questions up here, I'm sure that the administration staff can assist you with that.
There you go.
Does anybody have any comments, like to speak publicly? You want to come up to the podium, please state your name and address, please. And you have a five-minute timer. Thank you.
My name is Angela Vodraska. I'm at eight hundred East South Side Drive. Been a resident here now for five years. So again, my question becomes is, again, it might just be a terminology. It says, "No increase to current taxes." I guess my question becomes, you know, fiscal, I know it's not anyone's fault, per se, as far as how much school choice is taking from our system. And no one is acknowledging how much that has damaged our schools and how much money comes in. So instead of doing, like, how much do our, if I say, "Okay, go ahead and go from thirteen thousand dollars to fourteen thousand dollars a year in taxes, which I'll be paying," how much of that money is going to Downing?
Yeah, valid point.
So I'm not against giving money to my school district, but I am definitely against money sending for school choice. So why not do a bond instead of increasing taxes?
Anybody else? Go ahead. Name and address, please.
Audrey Hyatt, eleven oh-two Oakwood Drive, Polk City, Iowa. My husband and I have lived there since twenty oh-five. Kind of one of the points you made about the levy rate versus the tax bill, that kind of came up when I talked with you, Superintendent Klein, very nice guy, email and on phone and so forth. Understood he has a math background, and so that was kind of nice to talk numbers. But you, the bond referendum, that was in twenty twenty-three, the seventeen million dollar one, we talked about that. In fact, it did say your tax bill will not go up. Because basically, the levy rate, but it didn't, it was in fact just the levy rate that wouldn't go up. Your tax bill would actually go up. And we all saw that in an, not exponential, but increased way because our taxes as an assessed value on our homes went up about twenty-two percent on an average. Now, this go-along around on the voter PPL, I looked pretty closely at that. I didn't see tax bill not going up. I saw that the levy rate would not go up. But again, it can't because it's as high as it's going to go, so that's a little disingenuous in my. But you're trying to promote it. I'm looking at it the other way, that I think, you know, it's a little disingenuous. But that's because we're kind of on two sides of the table on that. So when I, I don't know if any of you have looked at Iowans for Tax Relief. They have looked at, you know, to consider population, that is student growth in respect to tax revenue growth. And what they're saying here is North Polk enrollment change, they are going through a projection even to twenty twenty-five, a forty-four point five percent inflation of thirty-two point seven percent. Reasonable tax growth is seventy-seven point one percent, and we're looking here that by their figures is a hundred and four percent, which on the bottom line, taxes are increasing twenty-six point nine percent faster than the combined growth of enrollment and inflation. And this is unreasonable. And I know you talk about your line item things going up percentages. Well, that still has to be taken in conjunction with what was the starting dollar. I mean, two percent is taking off the whole, I mean, kind of looking at a mortgage rate of a million dollars versus a mortgage rate of five hundred thousand. That two percent is against the million, the eleven percent maybe is on the five hundred thousand. Just trying to bring that into perspective. But looking at the little sheet that you showed us on what came out for showing this public meeting, thank you for allowing us to have a voice in that. Basically, what I did is I put the same evaluation of my house in for both figures, and my property taxes would go up two hundred and two dollars, and it says it's going to go up thirteen point nine-one percent. And that's if my house doesn't go up at all. So I made-
So those are put out by the state?
Correct, yeah.
So again, the information, they're assuming that there's a ten percent assessment increase, which is not, which is included in that thirteen percent.
I guess I thought every odd year, I thought we were going to get a new assessment this year, actually.
Every odd year, but this is setting tax rates for twenty-six.
When's, what's your fiscal year?
Ju, July first through June thirtieth.
For twenty twenty-six?
That's twenty-five. We're currently in fiscal twenty-five. We're setting the budget for fiscal twenty-six, which ends June thirtieth of twenty-six.
Okay. Going back to other, other North Polk levy rates, the voted PPL, yeah, it was maximum. Compared to the rest of the state, it's eighty-three cents. The regular PPL was thirty-three cents. That's the maximum as well. Debt service rate, you talked about that, is three point one-five. And I guess there just seems to be a lot of overlap to some of these things, especially PPL and the voter one, and then you look at, some of this was already to be covered in that seventeen million dollar twenty-twenty-three bond referendum because there was one point five million dollars of that seventeen million dollars that was supposed to be for HVAC and that sort of thing. So we've got multiple sources going into this particular thing. And so the other thing with, so we just never see our tax, our taxes go down. We get one bond referendum and it's right in tandem to the next. In fact, they can be overlapping. I just came from Polk City. I did get here on time, Superintendent Klein, and it was going to allow me a few minutes late, but got here on time. And, you know, they had a bond referendum that they set up. I felt fortunate that it didn't pass. But there has to be a way that this, this is better taken in check. You look at the per-student costs on here according to the Iowans for Tax Relief.
Audrey, you're about out of time.
Okay.
I'll let you finish up, yeah.
So it says here, and I'll give you this sheet, you can look it up on your own, on Iowans for Tax Relief in twenty twenty-two, they had per student twenty-four thousand four twenty-seven. Twenty twenty-three, it was down to eighteen thousand. So I'm not sure why the big jump and off the state average on that one. But anyway, I guess I would like to see the levy rate be more in line with what we're going to do with two percent because right now, you're not even at two percent, you're over three percent. So I hope the legislature does something to control spending. I think we're overspending, no matter what level we're at with in the city, if it's the city, if it's the county, or the school.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Is there any also, anybody else that would like to speak on behalf? Okay, come on up. Please state your name and address, please.
Chief, Newland Tower, I live at thirteen two-eleven Northeast Fourteenth Street. I've been on that side of the board, so I've, I know what you're dealing with. I've been on this side. You talk about insurance rates going up. Do you think anybody here that owns a home, their insurance rates haven't gone up ridiculously? In ninety-three, ninety-four is when I built my home. Now it's paid off, but between my property taxes and my home insurance, I'm paying more than what I used to pay for a mortgage. So it affects everybody. And I would say the most recent bond issues we've had, or most recent votes we've had, the bond issue did say your property tax wouldn't go up. I had the conversation with you that it shouldn't say that that way. And the pebble was said, "Your rates won't go up." Well, most taxpayers think, "Okay, my taxes won't go up." You guys know that's different, but that's what most of them think. So to me, for you guys to be in line with what you think on that side of the board, your rates shouldn't go up from last year's rates, your eighteen point seven, whatever, wrong number. From this side, most taxpayers would say they shouldn't go up from the seventeen, which you're getting the same amount of money. But I think it's very disingenuous to raise it to the eighteen-nine when even sitting on that side of the board, most of the information you put out said it wouldn't go up in rates. And going to, going to eighteen point seven-seven with all your stuff you've figured there, you'd still have eight-hundred-and-three, four-thousand, five-hundred-and-some dollars in new money versus your one million fifty-eight thousand one hundred and two. So you're still getting a pretty good chunk of money. You're keeping your side, which is the thinking from your side of the board, what it would be is rates would stay the same. And I think that's a happy medium. So that's pretty much all I have.
Well, and Keith, I mean, that is our hope. The hard part is the legislators aren't setting a number for us in what is there regulated, and it's self-imposed.
Well, you're dealing with two percent, which is at the low end of what they're talking.
Yep.
So you're probably looking at somewhere between two and two and a half.
Two point two-five is the house.
Well, two, two is, I mean-
That's between two and two and a half, right, two point two-five. And you're like, you're figuring this at a two percent rate, you said. So, so you're not going to get any worse than that, which still, these numbers would hold true.
The other portion of that that hasn't come out yet, though, is are we going to get the additional TSS money to meet the teacher minimums? So the teacher minimums have increased, and so when we talk about the same- And so, when we talk about the same amount of dollars as this past year, well, teachers, teachers don't want to get paid the same next year as they got this year. So, we are, how do we put negotiations in place to still make our ends meet there? But now, instead of the first-year teacher making 47.5, it has jumped to $50,000. And so, last year, we got additional money from the state to make that happen. This year, there is, there's been no certainty of that happening. And so, there is so many unknowns, like Chris talked about.
There's only so much you can push off on the taxpayers before you have a revolt. And to be, we've had two, two votes recently. And like I say, to be with what you, the information you gave out, to be genuine with what it would sound like from your side of the board, still wouldn't sound right from this side. But from your side of the board, to be genuine, you wouldn't increase your rate.
And I hope we're there, too.
One comment that I just want to have with you is, we would love to keep it the same. You have the state of Iowa, in my opinion, that is attacking public education. And we have a business to run. And so, when they're sitting on billions of dollars of coffers and they're giving us 2%, we still have a business to run. We would love to keep it the same. Our plan is to try to keep it the same. But I know you're coming and talking to us, but it's the people that are at the State House that are currently attacking public education and underfunding us, and the funding has to come somewhere.
You've got to realize there, too. If I, if I parked, what, a Ferrari in my driveway and then complained that I couldn't make ends meet, that would be, people would say, "That's kind of deep." People drive by and see two brand-new baseball softball fields with artificial turf. It is, it's, I mean, that's a bond issue, that's different money. I understand that, too. But it's, it's tough to say that, where are your priorities? I mean, if your priorities are in a certain place, you're going to take money from certain places and put it in those places. We have to do that.
I completely understand. We surveyed our community. We put a bond out on what our community wanted, a CTE, 10,000 square foot CTE willing for our students and new baseball softball. We didn't do that just because the board wanted to do that. We put a survey out to the community and the community passed it with 80% approval rating. I understand what you're saying.
With the idea that the taxes weren't going up, because that's what it said.
Well, they're going to go up if your assessed value goes up.
Well, but...
We're all, we all live, we all live in the district.
Technically, what your writing said was not that. What you put out publicly did not say that.
I understand it can be interpreted, yeah.
I understand.
It can be interpreted both ways. I understand what you're saying.
2023, it was, it did say your tax rate would go up. There was, there was no lag in interpretation on that. That was, that was pretty clear. But this year, I'm sorry, I'm not on that stage.
Yeah, and it's fine. And again, I get, we do appreciate you all coming and talking about this, obviously.
And I will say this, I thank you guys for your work. You guys do a job that you don't get thanked much for. So, so I appreciate that.
Yeah, well, thank you for coming.
I do want to clarify, you had made a comment that our increase, even with the bond issue, we would still have 800,000 in new money coming in. Is that from the taxes?
That's from, well, that's, that's, well, that's your figure. 17 points, should put my glasses on, 644, it looks like. That's what the state says your tax rate would be is to get the same money from last year.
Right.
So, if you throw that rate that out to what your tax rate was last year, that would mean you get 834,517.
It's a $1,058, and the new debt service is 681,000 of that. So, $1,058 minus about 700,000.
Well, you're getting 14 million, right? That's what you're asking for, yeah.
If we set that rate, yes.
And, and...
Which is a $1,058,000 increase over current year.
Yeah. And if you would kept your same rate, your increase would be 834,517.
Minus the 600 for the debt service.
Well, it is, are you minusing 600 for the 14,125?
No, it's included in it.
Well, and it would be included in that also. Because that's the numbers I used.
That, that's what I want to clarify. That's, that's including that 681,000 in debt service.
It'd be both included, so...
Yes.
One, you're getting 14, one, you're getting 13.
No, no, the middle column doesn't...
13,000, it is not included in there. You'll see it stays the same.
It still has the same debt service value. So, that, that's, that's the problem with this form, is it's, it's confusing. It's confusing.
I just, I wanted to recognize what you were saying. And we all are paying the same taxes you guys are. And none of us want to pay more taxes either. I get that. But this is a little bit of jockeying of robbing Peter to pay Paul, right? So, property taxes at the state level are paying for schools and some of the other amenities that we have for public services. When those get cut from the state level and we're not funded accurately or representatively of how our costs are increasing, that, that gets passed on, right? I'm not, I'm not...
Like Matt said, he said, one of his comments was, "You're running a business. You're trying to run a business, you're a school." Well, most businesses, every few years, they, they go and they, they cut people, they cut costs, they cut, redo things, they get streamlined and more efficient. Schools, well, schools, schools and government, for the most part, add. They add, they add, they add, they add, they add. You don't have the, well, businesses. Sam's Club, Walmart, every year, they cut 10 to 15% of their management. Tesla, I mean, all these companies, they go and they, they cut and streamline. They get rid of what doesn't work and move on. It's tough, even if you want to do it, it's tough to do it at a school level. It's almost impossible. But in order to not spend money, just throwing it out, you have to do something.
We, can I be very clear that we are cutting things? And some of the things that we're cutting are the advantages that our staff members get. May I ask you what you did for your career?
What I did for my career?
Hmm.
I was farm management for the most part.
All right.
I prepared taxes.
Awesome.
I did commodities, traded commodities.
Okay, so, I have been in education for the last five years. And I have not received a raise for five years.
Well, you say you've not received a raise. Did you get the step up every year?
Uh, no, we haven't. We had a salary freeze. And that was how our budgets were cut.
And where was that at?
Heartland AEA.
Heartland. So, you must have a terrible union there.
What we're going to do is we're going to...
Say, we're going to get enough, we're getting off topic here.
Yeah, we're getting a little bit off topic. Let's move on. Does anybody else like to speak publicly? Yeah, thank you for coming. Very much appreciated. Anybody else like to speak publicly? Okay.
But either way, again, I think the overall, it's, we appreciate you taking the opportunity to come share your voice. I mean, that's, that's what we want. We don't get many visitors to school board meetings, so it's kind of nice to have people come and share the good and the bad. So, I mean, we are here to listen and hear your side of the, of the table, just like you had mentioned. But, you know, we also are trying to be as fiscally responsible as possible. And it's, you know, and these are not, you know, every new hire is talked about in extreme detail. We run significant numbers of scenarios to look at year on year, what one new hire will mean to our budget, not this year, not two years, but five years, 10 years. So, I guess I do just want to share the transparency that we are truly trying to do the best that we can with the money that we have. At the same time, I mean, a great example for us, we run a million-dollar special ed deficit right now, over a million-dollar special ed deficit. And that's based on what this money that we spend to give the appropriate level of care and support that our special ed students need. So, we have to find those, that money somewhere else in our budget based on the difference that the state gives us. So, there's all kinds of unfortunate examples where our costs have continued to escalate. And we do, we take every new hire extremely, a lot of due diligence is done. But either way, thank you very much for expressing, for coming, for sharing your views. We're always here, you know, email, obviously, Mr. Klein loves to have conversations, so reach out if you've got more questions. But again, thanks for coming.
And one thing I will add, we had a good meeting with House Representative Ryan Weldon, who's a former school board president in Ankeny. And he came and spoke with us. He said, "I heard way more from people as a school board president than I do as a House representative." And so, I would just encourage you, I mean, reach out to your representatives and your senators and let them know, hey, there's a trickle-down effect of, of what's happening here that the school district has to plan on setting a higher ceiling because we don't know what we're getting from the state. And we do have to, I mean, support our teachers because at the end of the day, I mean, Mr. Iker here said it, we're a business. We have the most important business in the whole world, and that's educating the future of our country. And so, while dollars and cents at Sam's Club mean something, here, we need to make sure that we're keeping class sizes as, as reasonable as possible. And those have gone up over the past couple of years. Our class sizes, we, we ate a level, are a section at second grade. So, if you talk to any parents in our community that have second graders, our second grade classes are 26, 25, 26, 27 across the district. We don't want them to be that high. But in order to, I mean, make our budgets work, that's where we're at. So, I appreciate everyone coming. Reach out. I love having conversation about it. But do reach out to your state officials, too, because I think they, when they don't hear anything, they assume all is well, and we can trim the fat a little bit more.
Thank you, guys, for coming. Any other board member comments? Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Close the hearing.
Oh, close the hearing.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Close the hearing. All right, can I?
6:41.
At 6:41, motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. Thank you.
All vote.
All right. Boardman, Ashley, second.
Aye.
All in favor, aye.